I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is 6:30. We will start with April call. We have Bonnie Sears, Bill Bolton, our newest member, Phil Lammerow, and Marianne Barnsley, and Brian Murphy. Welcome, Phil.
Thank you.
We are very excited you're here.
Happy to be here.
This is not your first Planning Board rodeo.
Been awhile, but that's okay.
Alright, so I think maybe it would just be best if we did the bylaw thing before we do the minute thing, just looking at who's...one, two, three, four? Let's just do the bylaw thing first.
I agree, it's on the agenda that way, Madam Chair.
Oh, look at that, yeah. I'm just so used to the minutes being first.
Right.
Okay, so even with, I think we decided last meeting that even with a new member, we still wanted to amend our bylaws in this way because Steve Whitman's an alternate. We're still quite light as far as the board goes. So, we have read into the record the change to the bylaws, which is changing the amendment or the amount of board members that would make a quorum, which is currently five out of seven members. The new amendment would specify that a quorum would consist of any number greater than two, and that a vote would consist of a simple majority. It's a little different than the wording that we, it's the same, basically, as what we said last meeting, but different wording, right?
Well, you did specify greater than two.
Right, it didn't work.
Yeah, I think we said three or more or something like that.
Yeah, we said three or more.
Greater than two works.
What I was reading in our site is that a quorum was, had to be a majority of members, meaning that it could be no less than four if there were seven members.
We're choosing of those present, though.
I'm not sure. That's kind of, I was hunting, but I didn't find it.
Yeah, didn't find it in there.
Did you look under quorum? Obviously.
I was having trouble finding it.
Generally, they'll pinpoint it there.
I didn't see quorum in the, I was looking under planning.
Okay.
That's what I found as well.
I mean, we're there anyway, because we have all of our seated members here this evening.
If we, if we adopt a bylaw that's in conflict with the state RSA, the state RSA would still prevail.
Right.
Correct. So, there's no harm.
Except if we approve an application and we have a, we're short on a quorum, and then, yeah.
And we will be again tonight under the old rules.
We're short under, for the first, for the application we've continued.
Correct.
For the other one. Are you, you're not in a butter to that one too, are you?
To what?
Oh, the one?
No, the conflict, no.
No, just kidding. Okay.
I thought if we, we, you know, declared it last meeting, so if we pass it this meeting, wouldn't it not be under the new rule?
Yes, but there may be a qualification that Phil brought up that it might be specified in the RSA's that it has to be.
Planner handbook.
The New Hampshire RSA put, "A majority of any board or committee constitutes a quorum unless applicable law or rule states otherwise."
Okay.
So, we're cool. Are we accepting a rule that it state otherwise?
We would on further study. I mean, this could be undone at the next meeting.
We'd have to, we'd have to read it into the record to say we're going to undo it at the next meeting.
Well, easy enough to specify it as, as four out of, oh, I don't know.
This is...
Well, it's a majority of members, so if...
Seated members. Yeah, so like, if she had to recuse herself, she would no longer be seated. You know, and I've had, I've run into this in different boards in the past, like state boards, not municipal boards, but, and basically, it was like a board that was, had several people that were in conflict, so they recused themselves, and it was down to like, three people voting on like, a seven member. So, it was just the majority would suit as a quorum.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. So, we're good to go with what we've got?
Yeah, I see, I see, yeah.
Alright. So, we just need to make a motion to, any other discussion? Okay. So, we just need to make a motion to approve the change to the bylaws.
I will make that motion to approve the change in the bylaws.
And a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. No, no one opposed? Okay, okay. So, let's just think about, as we start growing our membership at the board, on the board, then we can revisit this.
Yes.
So, okay. Now, we can review the minutes, because we have enough people to vote on them. Alright, any edits, comments? In the minutes?
I found none.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve these minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes? I will second that.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Aye.
Okay. Did I hear you guys were going to swap order? Were you guys going to swap order?
Which I had.
Were you going to go first?
Okay.
Is that, is that okay with you?
Sure.
Okay, alright. So, next up, one lot subdivision from the parent parcel, PID number 223-068. Subdividing out a parcel of 11.5 acres and reserving 20 acres for the parent parcel. The new parcel is compliant in areas and frontage and lies in the agricultural zone. Hope you've noticed that your clips are still here.
Okay. Then they're not my clips anymore.
Yeah. Yes, please, thank you.
Unless I can deny it, then I'm taking it.
Yeah. So, we've been asked specifically by the person who takes our minutes to make sure that you say your names clearly into the microphone, otherwise she has a hard time, has a hard time transcribing our conversations to reliable minutes.
Okay, alright. This is a piece of property owned by Barbara and Alfred Conklin on Moss Road. It's 31.62 acres, and at this time, they'd like to divide it into two lots. Lot one's a 20-acre lot, which has, presently has the house and driveway and associated features with it. They're creating Lot Two, which will be 11 and a half acre lot. Lot Two has 300 feet of frontage, and Lot One has about 1,074 feet of frontage. There is a, there is an approved septic system on Lot One at the house, and they just redid it again, and so there is a revised approved septic, which I actually have a copy of the approval, but I put the approval number on the plan. And that was just, that was actually done this month, so. And, yes, the areas is, it's all flat, good soil, it's got, they're quite good-sized lots.
Alright, so, we need to think about accepting this application as complete. Any questions or discussion from the board about the completeness of this application?
As a, because I'm new to the board, do we typically confirm receipt of notice, of notices when they go out?
We do not. They go out certified, but it's not return receipt.
Okay.
First stature.
I would like to make a motion to accept this as complete.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the application?
Aye.
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 Okay. Any other questions about the, from the board about this project before I open it up for a public hearing?
I have a question about notation. The 5A's iron rods with caps, is the S denoting they've been set?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're in place currently?
Pardon me?
They're in place currently?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, unless there's more questions from the board at this time, I'm going to open it up for the public hearing. Alright, 6:40. Open this up for the public. Again, if you have any comments, please speak into one of the microphones, either at the podium or the one in the middle of the chairs, and clearly state your name for the record. Okay. It is almost 6:41, closing the public hearing, bringing back to the board. Any questions from the board after the public hearing? Nope. I don't have any. Are we going to keep these clips, or what?
It's very straightforward.
I can make motions, right? I never do, but I...
I don't think you're supposed to.
Okay.
As the chair.
I move that we approve this application.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I don't need to gavel for that.
I think it comes down to Robert's rules, though, so it depends on how closely we appear.
I never make motions, because I thought I wasn't supposed to. Something about, looks like they want to come back.
I think they want to go back with him.
Do we retain the Milar for recording?
Yes, actually, we keep a couple of copies of paperwork. I'll have the chair sign it at the end of the meeting. Okay, well, I'll have, I mean, I'll have, generally, the chair will sign them and then pick them up, or it's her call.
Yep.
Want to continue and do it?
I meant you didn't have to do it now.
Yes. I usually wait till the business is over. Thanks, Kevin.
Next up, back for a third appearance in a row, site plan review of an application on PID number 212-046. This is a proposed continued commercial development by Riverside Landing on Teddy Mountain Highway east of the present development. The parcel lies in the agricultural zone. I think this is your cue to...
Oh, I'm sorry, of course it is. I'm in my own little world here.
How could I?
Okay, I'll recuse myself.
Thank you.
I was just about to say...
Okay, but since this is a continued public hearing, I'm going to assume there's no discussion on the part of the board at this point. I'm just going to open up the public hearing. Does that work for everybody? Okay. It is 6:44, opening up the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak of any nature about this application?
And I still like to stand in support of this process of utilizing this property and knowing the elements of mitigation of the wetlands and other issues of the environment, I believe have been properly addressed, and I think this should go forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Go ahead.
I'm Bonnie Sears, and I am in a butter, and it seems fine to me. I don't, I don't have any problem with it whatsoever. I just wanted to state that again.
Thank you. 6:45, closing the public hearing, bringing it back to the board. Any discussion about this application? I think we had a note about the, I see something in the paperwork about the, maybe I didn't.
Sorry.
Response to the engineer report.
I think that Will covered it to board satisfaction last time, according to Mike's letter.
Mm-hmm.
Things were, I guess, Will either recovered at the further site plan reviews for the individuals, or they were in process.
Yep.
But I think the board found that the comments were of such a nature that they weren't stoppers at that point.
Okay.
I move that we approve the application.
A second? Okay. All those in favor of approving this application?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, quick business. Gosh, I just lost my agenda. Where'd I put it?
You had asked that the town administrator come and greet the board, you know, and fill them in on administrative matters on the town side. She will be able, able to do it on, at the work session of February 6th.
Great.
So, you know, along with the other, it's a fitting place for it.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for coordinating that.
No problem.
Alright, so, next up, I think we had made some tentative plans, well, maybe not that tentative, but to think about our plan for the year, so what we're going to do to, basically, plan our work sessions. So, so, Phil, we've been trying to, for the past year at least, we've been working on updating the, working on, I didn't say we're updating the zoning ordinance, we're not quite there yet, but we're working on looking at the zones in Plymouth and what makes sense with what we have and what doesn't quite make sense. So, so we've spent quite a bit of time digging into that. Steve's put two different of his classes to work, helping us get some clarity on zones in Plymouth. I guess one class on the zones, the other class was, helped us with the master plan, so we've got some good student work.
Nice to have that resource available to the board.
Yeah, yeah. So, they have finished their materials. We've got some loose, just quick fact sheets or information sheets about each zone. I'll make sure you get a copy of that.
That would be wonderful.
Student work. And then, also, just kind of want to think about what we're going to do each work session. Since Steve's not here, I feel like the actual planning on the zoning, what we're going to do for the zoning is, is a little harder for me to come up with that stuff, but I think if we just come up with kind of a, like a loose plan, right, we want to think about this by this time, this work session, and we will do some work session-y type stuff during the public hearings as well, depending on how, how heavy the load is. I feel like what you saw tonight is maybe a little more typical than most, for our public hearings, they're often fairly quick, but every once in a while, we get, well, this is the end of one that's taken us three sessions to get through, but...
The minor subdivisions are pretty quick, they're boundary line adjustments.
Especially when they're, you know, leaving 11 and 20 acres between the two of them.
Right.
So, I think, I'm just, I'm just writing out the months of the year here, but I think November is we want, when we want to make sure we have any zoning ordinance, any zoning changes ready to go.
Yeah, I'd put that towards the end of October, just to give a little free time on that.
Yep.
For sufficient time for public hearings.
Right.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Yep. So, I think if we are hoping to make any significant zoning changes, I would propose that in July and August, that's when we start rolling out some work sessions with the public. The concern is, you know, we've spent a year on this. At this point, you know, by the time we get to town meeting 2021, it'll be, you know, over two years of some, for some of us, and if we spend a lot of time on it and it just, you know, crashes and burns at town meeting, then, you know, it's a lot of work we put into it. So, just the idea is a lot of outreach, I think, should help with that. So, I'm going to just put July and August, just think about work sessions, work shops?
Mm-hmm.
Or zoning changes. I'm going to put in March, this is mostly something I want to work on, is our site plan regs need some updating. Brian has asked for a simple site plan. We get a lot of applications that come through that are pretty simple, and really, just because of the way our regulations are written, they just, they have to come before us, but it's really, there's no, you might be better explaining this than I can, Brian.
None of them, some of them don't rise to the level needing scrutiny by a board, if everything fits, you know, with the zone and the master plan and everything else. It's typically a change of use kind of thing. But some, a typical example would be the suite shop that's going to open where the Republican headquarters was. Zero changes exterior to the building, there's no parking considerations. The only way you'd know it is if you walked in the door or saw the sign out in front. So, something like that, where, not a change of use, but a continuation, just a different, well, it is a change, but it's not a super material change, and certainly, the criteria would be laid out for the administrative site plan review by the planning board to, so, you know, there would be checkboxes, and you know, if you fail one, or you pass them all, then it puts it back to the board instead of going the other avenue.
I seem to remember that the site plan review standards that I was using in, on the previous board I was on, we had three levels of site plan review. One was full, one was modify, you know, modified site plan review, and then there was another, another level, but the modification was, you know, similar to what you're discussing.
Right.
You know, it was a pretty easy, you know, lower standard of submitted requirements.
Right.
You know, whether or not we make the decision that it doesn't come before the board, it's still, you know, whether you're putting in a market basket or changing the Republican headquarters to an ice cream and bubble tea shop, you're filling out the same form, so, in the same...
Right. So, there's scrutiny on the form, I mean, and, like I was saying, it could be written in such a way that we're, you know, if you, if you don't meet the criteria, then you find the other one, and that way, it takes all the guesswork out of it, or, you know, personal preferences. And like the chair said, when we write these things, they have to, you know, be able to stand on their own for the distant future, not just written around one particular person.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we, I think what we've, I think it's confusing for the board, too, to be reviewing a pretty minor site plan review with a, you know, the major site plan review application. It's just, you know, you're like, well, you don't have this, you don't have this, you don't have that, and really, you don't need an elevation building that exists where you're not changing anything on the front, so...
Sometimes including language, like, only those items that are changing need to be included on the document, and that doesn't, that kind of absolves the applicant of having to include things like topographic lines if they're not proposing any grading.
Right.
Yeah, at this point, you have to ask for a waiver of those, under our system now, so, rather than have a whole bunch of W's on a page, you know, make one that suits.
I think, I think that's a worthy thing to put on the agenda.
So, I think maybe around March, right around town meeting, we can start working on that, but I think site plan regs, we only need to bring it to a public hearing to, to change those, so...
But a zoning, or changes to zoning require town approval, but changes to site plan and subdivision regulations that are board policies only require public hearing and adoption by our board.
Yep.
Correct, I recall correct.
Okay, so, we're going to put that there. February, did, how many people reviewed the master plan intensively? I didn't. So, so, let's put on February, let's do a, and I'm going to do my best to remember this. We're, I think it's a good time to just look, to really look at the master plan again. I haven't opened it in a few months. I know we wrote it, but just looking at the to-do list and anything, I think it would be really helpful just for everybody to come out with, like, okay, this seems like something really easy, we could do this, or, I also think it would be helpful to have a good, solid grounding in the master plan for when we meet with the town administrator, so we can tell her about all the things that are on her plate with the master plan. So, so, so I think with an eye towards the implementation section, and just think about those things, since Chris isn't here as our taskmaster, he was kind of thinking a lot about those low hanging, the low hanging fruit, and at this point, I think it's time we, we tackle some of those as well. The zoning ordinance is, you know, certainly not low hanging fruit. So, thinking about those things that, you know, at this point, we've had the zoning ordinance for over a year, or the master plan for over a year, there's things that are in the short term that we should make sure we're, we're attending to. So, master plan, discussion. And then, I think April leaves us to hopefully maybe look at the zones again. Any other ideas?
So, are these going to be passed on to Brian to like, formalize and send out to us, so that we can see where the metrics are?
Yeah. So, make, share the calendar, this kind of thing, yeah. I, I'm trying to figure out a good way to, well, for me to remember what, to take my to-do list here and actually remember to do it when I'm not here, but also how to distribute this information, but, but I think this calendar is a work in progress, too, but I can, I can maybe make it look more official than this, too, and give it a try.
Should we include the calendar in our minutes and post them so that they're available to the public?
Yeah.
Or also, if it's just like an internal thing or something like that, just have, you know, Jules post it on a shared drive?
Oh, like, oh, yeah, yeah. So, we're working on getting, the Hemi Baker TV has a Google Drive, so we're trying to have some of our working doc, you know, working documents, but documents that we can easily access through just, but like a read-only Google Drive, so we're not making, you know, notes and having conversations in them. We could put that in there, too, for sure, but I think having, I think having just, you know, what we're going to do in our work sessions as some sort of public record, because the more we have people participating, the better, I think, so, okay. Alright, so we have a couple, you know, we've got May and June, I mean, I know we're going to fill these up, but, so I don't feel like we have to have something in every month yet, I just can't think of what else specifically might happen in May and June, but I think, my guess is April, May, and June, if we're aiming for zoning amendments in October, which is still pushing it, maybe, but working on the zones, and, and building that up a little bit more in April, May, and June, so, I mean, it's really just three work sessions, so. Is that good?
Yeah. Is there, is there anything like, you know, Steve anticipated another class that might be thrown at something, or?
I don't think he's got a class this semester. I think he's lightened his teaching loads, so I don't think there's a class this semester.
Okay.
But if we can think of other student projects that would be helpful, I don't know if there's an avenue for that, but... I'm not well-prepared for this evening, for this portion of it, but we've got, I've got some things down for dates. Anything else? I guess we need to, officers in April. April, March?
Didn't we do that at the last meeting?
We just did, but it's, are we, well, our bylaws state that we do it after the, at the first meeting after
Okay.
town meeting, or until the end of time.
Well, we had to do it mostly to fill vacancies.
Well, because we had, I was the only officer, so...
Okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah. One year or until a successor is elected, so, so we could... Yeah, one year or until the successor is elected, so, so we could just continue on forever with the officers we have.
I move that we move, continue on.
Yeah, forever, thank you, yeah.
Does it say forever too?
Never moving.
Never to be considered again.
Okay, anything else you think we should tackle as a, as a board?
I, I don't know if this has anything to do with us or not, but I wanted to mention where they're going to be doing all the new water lines and sewage and digging up everything. As everybody must know that the, in the common, where we have the fountains, it's, it's been broke forever, and I just figured when they have all that stuff dug up, I mean, if, if there's going to be much more to fix that, because I understand that the reason it's not existing anymore with water is because it froze, at one point broke pipes.
Larry Gibson did mention that they were going to work on those.
Because I had talked to him. Oh, okay, because I just thought it would be really nice, because I've, I've seen a lot of people go over to them and someone I happened to be there and they're probably people from out of town, but they turn, and it's like, okay, there's no water, and it's like, yeah, that's, that's pretty deceiving to have that there and then you get nothing. But yeah, I'd like to see that.
It's kind of funny to actually see one in public, it's almost like people want to use it because of the novelty.
Yeah, really, and didn't the water used to come out from where the, and so, and birds used to get water from it?
Right.
And it's just, I think it's just nice if we could bring it back and to avoid any kind of pipes freezing again, if they shut it off at a certain time.
Right.
So there's no pipes, no water in the pipes.
It sounds like that's going to be addressed, and the young man who posed for that just turned 100 last year.
Yeah, I saw the story on that.
He lives across the street from my parents.
You're kidding.
Oh wow. If I'm knocking on doors, I'll be sure to knock on his.
Big brown house across the street from my mom and dad, yeah.
That's neat.
See, that's what that clean level will do for you.
Been drinking that water for decades.
All right.
Out of youth. We can start charging for that water, revenue.
Any guest speakers we would like to bring in, like we had the?
I was thinking about that, actually, yeah.
Or just thinking about topics we want to learn more about, because I think something I mentioned a couple of months ago is, you know, maybe taking, when we have a little extra time, just to look at like various planning topics and, and digging into those a little deeper, just to make us better at our jobs.
Does, oh boy, does the state still put on a planning and zoning conference? I always, I always found those to be great resources.
And, and going deeper on that, Phil, the town will pay for your tuition. And if we get a group, then if, if I'm going, I'll, I'll take people along in the town car, you know, it's carpooling. But, but definitely if you, if you, if you're interested at all, let me know and I'll, I'll, when it comes up, I saw that they had just announced that they're going to do it, but they didn't give the dates yet.
Bring in the fall?
Yes.
Yeah, there's usually like the big annual conferences, usually like end of May, early June, something like that, usually on Saturday.
It's always a beautiful weekend.
Right.
It's always hard to be there for a full day on Saturday on one of the nicest days of spring.
Really sitting there all full of spaghetti and trying to stay awake in the afternoon sessions.
But let's try and get at least one of us there, because I think we have had just one, at least one of us there for the past few years, and it's just nice to, to report, I think Bridgette and Chris reported back on a lot of good stuff.
I would probably be willing to attend, only because I'm kind of rusty and.
I haven't been to one yet, so I probably.
They really are a great learning opportunity.
Okay. I wonder if it might be nice to have someone from the Lakes Region Planning Commission come in, just, you know, let us know what kind of stuff they can do.
That would be good. That would be a good idea.
Trying to think, what else?
I was thinking about the Conservation Commission, they ought to invite the Lakes Region.
Yeah.
Conservation Trust.
I think it would be nice to have a talk about how land trusts work.
I know there were some local land trusts that held easements in the area where I was before, and it'd be interesting to know if, if the local conservation trusts are, are they holders of easements? Do they manage easements? Oftentimes easements have requirements that have to be enforced and somebody has to be in charge of enforcing them. It's not, not just something that you put in place and ignore forever.
Yeah, we had this discussion, we were talking about the easements that will go into place if the wetlands permit passes or gets approved for the Riverside Landing development, and since we recently, what, two years ago, joined the Lakes Region Planning Commission, was it two years ago? A year ago? We, because we're part of the Lakes Region Planning Commission, we're now in the service area of the Lakes Region Conservation Trust, whereas before, and which is a pretty robust organization. Whereas before we were part of the North Country Council, and so we weren't, we weren't part of them, and there was only, there's only one other land trust that really serves this area, so, except for the big ones, you know, that might not be as interested in, you know, smaller parcels or things like that, so.
What is the definition of like the easement? I mean, what, I know it's, it's like to let somebody get to some piece of land somewhere, but what is the whole, I don't understand the whole thing.
Well, there's, basically easements are just legal overlays on a deed that tell you that assign rights to others or reserve rights to the deed holder, or, like a shared driveway, for example, is usually cross-deeded between the two parcels with an easement that, you know, runs however. So they both have the right to pass and repass and neither can block it against the other. Your power lines running down your, even to your house have an easement. From the pole to the house, it's either aerial or underground depending. So it's, it's, it's a way to let people use the property without, you know, it, oftentimes it's in service to something else like utilities. And, you know, they do it that way so they can go in there and, you know, they can keep, they can manage the undergrowth, they can work on the lines, do whatever they have to do without seeking individual position, permissions from everyone.
Piece of land through somebody's property, does that mean that people can come and go anytime they want, willy-nilly?
You're talking about conservation easement, that's, that's, I mean, it's still the same thing. It's, an easement's just retaining certain rights for someone who doesn't own the actual parcel of land.
So, yeah, we were getting to that, so, and you're, I think I see where you're coming from, because you run a butter to conservation parcel number two. No, it only affects the property that's deeded to it. There's no implied right of access over anybody else's property to get there.
And a conservation easement does not necessarily mean there's any public access
Correct.
to the, the property. The conservation easement can mean a lot of different things, it just depends on how it's written.
I would like to come back to this, can I interject that this conversation reminds me that a few years ago, there's an organization, there was an organization, I'm not sure if they're still in a space, they kind of advocate for the state's current use structure and, and they can come speak to planning boards and they, I found them to be a great resource in asking about the ins and outs of the state's current use law and what can be done, can't be done, and that might be the kind of thing where we want to invite the selectman or a tax assessor, if, if we were to have someone like that come in. But getting at conservation easements, you know, oftentimes a family with a farm might choose to put an easement on their farm that would prohibit subdivision or further development with the intention of keeping it as a farm. And, and that's a type of conservation easement that, you know, they, it allows them to transfer the property, but the buyer needs to understand that, you know, the easement prohibits further development beyond what's allowed, you know, so, and, and, you know, there can be, I think conservation easements can be written with the intention of, you know, keeping space forested or in agriculture, I think there are a number of ways you can go about it.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I just didn't understand, you know, an easement to a piece of property that's mainly wetlands and, and I guess the idea to keep it for whatever is there, so that nothing goes on, which, I don't know. But it's like, why does anybody need to get to it? Because there's nothing there, really, just.
Right, and, and the purpose of that one in particular, because, I mean, that, that whole area, as you all know, is, would be unbuildable.
Exactly.
And not only is it in the floodway floodplain, but it's also wet, so, you know.
It's like a jungle.
Right, and, and the idea for that one is to offset the taking of the OXBO.
Yes, I, yeah, I realize that.
And what's the yield? I mean, if you take an acre like that for wetlands permit, do you have to get, how much land do you have to set aside?
I think they have some formula, and I don't know what it is, but yeah, yeah.
Are easements indefinite?
They're, yeah, in perpetuity, yeah, yeah. And there are things you can do to change an easement. It happens at the state attorney general's level, it's not easy to change an easement.
None of us could change these conservation easements, however, if you put, you know, an easement on your parcel, you'd have a better chance of overturning it because you're the deed holder. You know how that works, but, but again, there's a lot of protections that are built in, so people don't change their minds.
And that's why having the easement holder and the proper, and the fee owner is, having them be separate is good, because otherwise you're having the easement holder, you're basically enforcing yourself.
So that, that land is going to be?
It'll be owned by the town.
That's what I was, owned by the town.
But it'll be managed by an entity that isn't the town.
And what would that entity?
It would, would either be the Conservation Commission, though there's a little bit of entanglement there. But these land trusts, so the other thing when you do this, you have to, you can't just say, you know, take my land and put it in trust, you have to provide some money for the maintenance in the future. So these lands come with that and part of that will be used just, you know, for monitoring or whatever else. I don't know that it can be used for a rec trail.
No, no, the stewardship fee is usually specific.
What would the maintenance be?
It's usually, so stewardship fee is usually for, it's basically set aside for like potential legal situations later on. So as land changes hands, it, you know, the person who owns the property, the person who owns the development rights through the conservation easement are two separate people, so if that, the property gets owned by several, you know, like several owners down the road and they are trying to, you know, put up a fence in a place where the easement specifies they can't, there's, there's often some legal ramifications for that.
Yeah, the fee would provide for legal action against the owner in violation of the.
So anybody with an easement on their property and they go to sell it, that easement goes along with it or the?
Yes, any type of easement, actually. There, there are different types for different purposes.
If, if you look at the, the plan we just approved tonight, there are notes on there that, that identify there are easements on the property and one was, you know, you know, for the electroco-opt access, you know, things like that. Those, those, they stay with the property perpetuity.
And also, you know, that money, if, say somebody rides an airboat up in there and abandons it, you know, that would help to fray the damage done to the property and to get rid of the, the airboat at the same time. So, you know, a lot of the problems that come from private ownership of the conservation easements is lack of funds to do things like that or the legal problems that were brought up.
The other thing just at the town level that, you know, it seems like, okay, if you just gave a piece of property to the town, it would be well-protected because the town owns it, but it's really, that could be at the whim of town meeting and that could change really quickly, so you actually will see towns with kind of some vulnerable property that was given with a sense that it's going to be protected, but, but an easement's important there too. Okay, thank you. Frank?
I was going to say, the RSA 4717 is all about how deeds are written. It has, you can go and look it up online, and it gives you all of the conditions to all of the word systems used in deeds for the state, and easements is in there. So it could describe, there's all different types of easements and it's all about the content that was described in that easement, because they can be timed easements, the specific events for the easement, or it could run with the land. So I think it would help you if you actually went online, looked that up, and then.
Do you even know who you're talking to when you say that? I'm, me and a computer just never have met.
Lampson Library has all the RSAs, and better yet, they have all of the New Hampshire Practice Series that back that up, which is a case law of all the laws that has been dealt with, is challenged in them. So you can refer anything, the planning laws, go right down New Hampshire Practice Series, and it backs that up, tells you what it means.
Thank you, Frank.
You should have a copy of the orange book, right?
Yep.
Oh, I do.
Yeah, 4717 is right here, it's, there's a lot here.
Oh, okay, so when you start writing some deeds. Yeah, and so, yeah, so having a conservation trust or a land trust person also talking about the value of conservation land in communities as well, because sometimes, or often, it's the case that protected land, while it's not pulling in as much tax revenue, just its existence as open space is beneficial to the town in a financial way as well, so.
I think the public would get some great value out of that too. Especially the current use thing, which is so complex.
Yeah. I, I thought the presenter from space was a great resource, sorry. I'm the organization. I, I think they're, you know, the organization is set up to advocate for the state's current use system and they were, they were a great resource to be able to ask questions.
So if we, I don't want to burden your time, Brian, but if we come up with contacts and people, would you be willing to coordinate for the board?
Yes. Cost you, Madam Chair.
Get some nice clips over there. Okay, so I think we've got kind of a loose idea of what we'll do at least next, the next two meetings, so I think that's a good, a good spot for us to be. So I'd say dig into the master plan, is it good if I give everyone a recommendation or a reminder?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to set a reminder to remind you. Last time I did this, I said, it said, "Remind Planning Board," and I couldn't remember what it was.
Repeating a reminder, right? Set a reminder to set a reminder.
All right. Sorry for the pause here, to review master plan. All right, so I'm going to remind everyone in one week.
So focusing us, you know, focusing us on what, low hanging fruit?
Low hanging, low hanging fruit, and specifically, yeah, and I think it's helpful, I think I'm going to look at it with an eye towards the site plan review, because that's coming up the following month, but I know there's a number of things that we could do there. All right, I got a reminder for a week from today. Might be two weeks from today, yeah, whoops, I did two weeks from today, but that's fine too, because we have a week off. So that's nice, so there's plenty of time to review the master plan, okay. Anything else?
Yeah, this is a, five Thursday month.
Anything else, or would someone like to do the?
Motion to adjourn? Is that what you were hunting for? You got it.
All right.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Thanks for joining us, Phil.
Took the hit for the team, you know.
I found a tiny.
Frank, I didn't mean to be flip about that, I just don't, I don't mess with computers.
I put my jacket.
Someone's gearing maybe?
I think it maybe came off the Christmas.